Good evening, welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting for tonight, January 11th, 2021. And we are here by Zoom. My name is Donald Campbell, I'm the Chair of this Board, and I'd like to ask the Board members to please introduce themselves, starting with you, Bruce.
Good evening, everybody. Bruce Lee Clark.
Hello, Jean Connor.
Good evening, Jeannie Jenkins.
Hey, everybody. Jim Carroll.
Hi, Sarah Perrin.
Thank you. Also with us tonight, we have our Town Manager Stuart Hurd, we have our Assistant Town Manager, Dan Mox, we have Nancy Lively taking minutes. We also have with us, who will be coming on very shortly, Megan Harrington and Trey Dobson, and we'll introduce them at the time. So before we start this meeting, I'm going to put up the call-in information, and I'm going to read the following necessary piece, which is that due to the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency declared by Governor Scott in pursuant to Addendum 6, Executive Order 1-20 Act 92, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There is no physical location to attend this meeting. However, the public may view it on CAT TV and call in at 1-646-558-8656, using a meeting ID of 873-2045-5287. If technology fails us, the meeting will be continued at a time and place to be determined. All votes that are not unanimous will be done with a roll-call vote in accordance with law. So we will be taking public comment from 6:05. At 6:05, we'll leave that open for five minutes. If we don't have any public comment in by 6:10, we'll move on to the next item, although that item can go to 6:15 if we do have people to call in. So again, if you want to call in, dial 646-558-8656. And when prompted, enter the meeting ID 873-2045-5287. You'll have to press star twice, it'll tell you what to do. And then when you're entered from the waiting room into the meeting, you'll have to press star six to unmute yourself. When you do that, please, please turn down the volume on your computer or your radio, however you're listening to CAT TV. Okay, I'm going to put this down. And we are going to go to our first order of business this evening, which is the Consent Agenda. This consists of the minutes of December 28th, 2020, January 2nd, and January 4th, 2021, the warrants as circulated, and liquor licenses. Presumably, everybody's had a chance to ask Stuart about any questions they have about the warrants, but if you have not had a chance to do that, now is your time. Similarly, if you haven't gotten any corrections to Nancy Lively, this would be the time to bring them forward. So anything from the Board? If not, I would ask you to please unmute yourselves.
Got to have a motion.
Yeah, that's right. If not, I would ask Bruce to please make a motion.
I would move that we adopt the Consent Agenda.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Jean. And now, not seeing any further discussion, I would ask you to unmute yourselves. And all in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. So we are, it's 6:06. We're open for public comment here. If any is forthcoming, we would certainly accept it at this point. Maybe while we, while that happens, I will let you know, I will introduce the people who will be giving our presentation, our next presentation. As you know, the COVID numbers have not been looking great. We have not had a really good time of it this past month. And we have been lucky to have really good advice and really good medical system in our community. Part of that is the Health Department, and Megan Harrington is here from the Health Department tonight, and she's going to help us get our heads wrapped around some of the opportunities for testing and some of the things that are, we can do to help keep the numbers down. And we also are lucky to, again, have Trey Dobson from the Medical Center with us. And Trey is becoming pretty well-known at this point. I think I saw Trey in the banner on Saturday, and then I think I saw him in the paper on Monday. And I think you might have done a CAT TV thing with the Chamber of Commerce in there somewhere. So anyway, we've, we know you've been working hard at this, and we know you've been really working hard to get the message out there, but we are very thankful to have you. So it's 6:08. I don't see anybody in the waiting room. I think at this point, I'm going to move on to the next agenda item. And so I'm going to open this up to Megan and Trey, and I guess I'd ask you to, we didn't script this, so I'm not sure who wants to go first, but Megan, I did speak to you first. Would you like to start this out tonight?
I might punt it to Trey, because he has graphs. And I always think graphs are a great way to start out any presentation. So not to pass the buck, but it can help me guide where we go next, too.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Trey. Thank you very much for being with us.
Sure, yes, I'll use this, and then Megan, I can comment and go from there. So let me just share the screen here, and what we're going to be talking about primarily first is vaccination. Then we can kind of go back, Don, and talk about, Donald, and talk about some of the increased incidents. But I know vaccination is on everyone's mind here. So let's just bring it up, and let me see if I can make that big. Okay, is that big for everybody's screen? Great. It is January 11th. It's Pandemic Day 306. That's since March 11th, when the World Health Organization declared this a pandemic. And we're on Vaccination Day 26th in Vermont and in the country. And this is the most updated graph, it does, or timeline, sort of a Gantt chart. It does change over time, but this is vaccination timeline preliminary for Vermont, and actually specifically to our population. So there's actually data behind and assumptions behind these timelines, although we can't hold on to them too tightly, because some of them will change. We are in that purple phase. You can see that that purple phase aligns with early January right now. That's what's called Phase 1A, includes the healthcare workers, first responders. We're fortunate enough here to have received enough vaccine to have a really broad definition of who meets healthcare worker and who meets first responders. That's not the case throughout the state, it is in some locations. That is not at all saying that anyone is doing anything wrong, because they're not. It's our biggest constraint is supply right now. And I'm going to go into that in a little bit, and I know Megan will have some comments, too. And then as well, real important, the staff and the residents of the long-term care and residential facilities. I see that I misspelled living there, but that's important. But that is actually sort of on a separate track from what the hospital's allocation of vaccine is being used for. So I won't say much more, other than that's being done through a federal program and is moving forward. And then there's this question, when will those with high-risk medical conditions be included? And we're not certain, we're not certain whether they will be included or not, whether we'll just go with age bands, or whether they may be included early. And I know that will cause a lot of questions, which I'm happy to address. And then Vermont, as you're aware, has decided to move with age bands. It gets written up in the media that this is in contraindication to the recommendations of the CDC, which is not the case. The CDC laid out many possible scenarios, one main one, and it included several different ways you could address vaccination. I will say Vermont was ahead of the curve, because all of the problems that you are reading about right now is caused by over-prioritization, trying to make sure that someone gets the vaccine in front of someone else, and what that's caused is a lot of delay. But we do hope that this vaccination will start in early February. It again depends on supply of vaccine coming into the state. I think most of you saw over the weekend, or late last week, the announcement that that the new administration will be releasing a lot of doses of vaccine that had previously been reserved for second doses in those who've received first. That should open up the number of vaccine doses we receive in Vermont. It should theoretically double those, which means we should be able to double the number of people we're vaccinating. And then it will move in this stepwise fashion according to ages. And likely, it'll be done in a combination of large-capacity vaccination clinics in the state initially, followed pretty quickly by distribution of the vaccine to other locations like pharmacies, certain medical practices, and potentially even other facilities, and maybe even our local Department of Health, although, again, this is still in the planning phase. When I say that, it will get going quickly in February, I am confident. What we're lacking right now is supply. We are not lacking operational talent. We all know how to do this, we've been doing it before COVID vaccine, we're ready to do it now. There are some specifics, such as with the registration format and sending that information to the state, but we're already doing that right now. We're vaccinating over 200 people a day at Southwestern Vermont Medical Center. Many hospitals have similar numbers, and it's actually going quite well. We're excited to move into the public phase. And then just think about, like, what are the threats to a successful vaccine program? And you read about them in the media, and don't get me wrong, the media is very important to read, but much of the problems are in places that are just so unlike Vermont. They have just different systems, they have a much denser population, and we're not running into those same problems, we're running into the supply problem. But here are what I see as the five biggest threats to our program, and not to the program in its entirety, but to trying to get done here by the summertime, which is a real goal, at least that I have, and I'm sure many other people. The first is supply. So we've already talked about that, assuming we can get a good amount of vaccine in, that manufacturing and distribution increase, and that hopefully this spring, we have two or three more vaccines come online, then that should help. The second is the operational inefficiencies. It is true that the operational problems did occur early on for everyone around the country, that includes Vermont. We got past them quickly. I would say staff resources are our next biggest problem, especially as COVID increases, and we have more people being hospitalized. You know, we have to take care of those patients, and we can't really divert staff towards the vaccine effort. But I do know and believe there are good discussions occurring to work with everything from volunteers in the community to state resources. And then the third thing is just the vaccine hesitancy and resistance. Hesitancy I define as people who are hesitant right now, they want to learn more, they want to see what happens with vaccination. And then there are those who are just completely resistant and will not change their mind, at least without some, something very compelling that they experience themselves. Then the third, and sorry, the fourth and fifth one are the resistant mutations we all hear about. Actually, what I mean by this is that COVID becomes so prevalent that it inhibits the vaccine program itself, not that the vaccine would be ineffective to the mutation. So far, there's not indication of that. And previous history with other viruses show that resistant development to vaccines requires time. So they don't just become resistant without seeing the vaccine for a long period of time. And so that is unlikely to be a threat. What the threat is, is that we get overwhelmed by COVID cases and have a hard time completing the vaccination program. And then finally, I mentioned the last part, which is a labor pool shortage. Again, working with volunteers, working with the state, we should be able to overcome that. And I just want to talk about one more thing, real quick, Donald, and then I'll stop. This is a really basic graph, there is no higher-level math here, but let me just tell you what I'm trying to show. The top line is adhering to prioritization. So someone cannot go in front of someone else unless they meet exact certain criteria. And what happens is it pushes the vaccination program out, and you're reading about that now. And in fact, you read probably that Israel had the same exact thing happen, and they just opened up and said, well, we just cannot manage this prioritization. We'll try, we'll try to contact people who we know are at risk, we'll try to make sure they're aware and give them the resources to get the vaccine, but we're not going to prohibit anyone who happens to come to the clinic. And as a result, their percentages of the population have increased, that they vaccinated have increased dramatically. And we're already seeing the same thing here, both locally, regionally, and nationally, when we drop some of these prioritizations. It kind of is counterintuitive, but the real goal is to achieve herd immunity. And the way we achieve herd immunity is by vaccinating a lot of people. The vulnerable people need to be vaccinated, but guess where they get the virus from? They get it from young people who are visiting. So it's almost a catch-22. And I'll just stop there, and that'll help stimulate some conversation, and Megan can point out my mistakes.
Yeah, I fact-checked it, it all comes out clean. Yeah, and I'm happy to piggyback on that. I pulled some numbers that I thought would be interesting, in that, you know, today, in Vermont, over 20,000 people have received their first dose of the vaccine. We have almost 400 who've completed the two-dose series. In Bennington, our current rate of vaccination, or starting that first dose, is 4%. So, and that's right on target with the rest of the state, where we're doing really, really well. Our operations here are really, really going well. For the governor's goal is to eventually have 18,000 vaccine doses distributed each week. And Trey's right on the money, our biggest hurdle right now is the supply. We've been having conversations around vaccine planning basically since March of last year, knowing that this was coming down the pipeline, that we would eventually be here. So there's a lot of people and a lot of energy that have gone into this planning, and everyone's kind of on standby, waiting for those doses to increase and our supplies to become a little bit more predictable. And again, agreeing with Trey, we're looking at February to start ramping up some of our public options. Our teams at VDH and our other community partners were, you know, also doing that planning, and what those community clinics will look like, and how that communication will go out when we are ready. For anyone who's been through our testing here locally, and you've gone through the signup process with the registration system, you set up your account, and you pick your schedule. The plan is right now, and of course, this could change tomorrow, but we're planning on using that same platform interface for our registration process. So if you're thinking, you know, what can I expect with, what this will look like? Our hope is to use a very similar system, or at least, or the same platform. So stay tuned for that. Again, you know, that registration process, we're looking to make it as easy as possible. But a lot of the things that we're trying to get in front of is any kind of barriers to accessing the vaccine. So whether that's a technology barrier, or transportation barrier, mobility issues, anyone who's been through a large vaccine clinic knows that they can be kind of busy, and there might be stairs, or a large parking lot, or just some literacy barriers. We're trying to get ahead of all of those in advance. And so we're making plans to address any of those issues locally. In terms of the technology, they are setting up 211, be able to help people with registration over the phone, if you don't have a computer, or the registration process is limiting to. So they're trying to get ahead, I guess, of all these things. But of course, there's always going to be something we miss. So our hope is that we're getting feedback continuously from the community about what's working and what's not, what's not clear and what is. The communication channels we'll be using will be, you know, through our healthcare partners, through local media, through VDH communications. So as the HBNs, you know, as we open that up, and as things start ramping up, we'll try to get that information out as soon as possible, so folks can start registering for appointments. And I will also pause there, we can open up the questions or move on to...
Megan, I know from our conversations that asymptomatic testing is extremely available and easy at this point. And I wonder if you would be willing to, just to break that down to absolutely bite-sized pieces. If people have any doubts about their own health right now, what do they do? And how difficult is it?
Absolutely. So testing is available in our community in Bennington, six days a week. It is a great partnership, collaboration. It's VDH is managing kind of that registration process. SVHC staff are there, I believe, every clinic, helping with that process. And then it's actually at Bennington Rescue, if anyone's familiar with that location. I think generally, nine to three most days. I could have that wrong, I haven't looked at it in a minute, but all that information is on the website to register. The guidance right now is that if you were near someone who tested positive, if you're close contact with someone who tested positive for COVID, you attended a multi-household gathering. If you are experiencing symptoms consistent with COVID, check with your provider. But if you're asymptomatic, if you traveled, if you think you might have, you know, be at risk for being positive for COVID, get tested. The service is there, it is available, and as we were chatting, it's still very efficient. So two to three days, you'll have your results, and it's best to know your status. If you do test positive, our contact tracing team has been also incredibly efficient. Most people, once the state, it's a reportable disease, so that positive result reaches our contact tracing team, those calls are going out within 24 hours to folks. There's an interview that takes place, we find out about your work site, about any gatherings, and these aren't meant to be punitive conversations, these are to find out, you know, if there's anyone else who needs to be notified, and you give that permission, if you're in that situation. And those conversations can continue, and people can kind of stop the transmission and take care of themselves, and do what they need to do to keep the community safe. In the last two weeks, we've had 171 cases of COVID in our community. And so, you know, there's still opportunity to slow that down and stop it in its tracks. We're still promoting the same preventative measures we have been since the beginning: wear a mask, social distance, gather with your house, just limited to your household. And if you do gather, get tested. One of the other ones that I've been hearing lately that I love to promote is to support those who are isolating, or are, you know, just choosing to stay home for their health and for their safety. Bring them groceries, pick up their meds, you know, support those who are all making these choices as well. But we're really, we're really promoting people to get tested. It's definitely not, if you show up there, no one's going to be like, ooh, you attended a party, right? No, no one's going to do that. We want you to go get tested.
That's great, so very low bar on testing. Let's take some questions from the Board, I'm sure you have them, I know I have a couple. But Jean, why don't you start us off, please? Jean Connor.
Okay, yes, thank you. Let's see, where to begin? I have a few. Why don't I ask them all at once, rather than stopping and starting? So my first one is, do you, or does the medical community have any sense of when we'll know how long the vaccine will last, and if it's going to become like a flu shot that we have to get? I know we're not there yet, but I'm wondering if there's any sense of when we'll know that. I've been thinking about herd immunity, and it seems to me that some parts of the country, i.e. the Northeast, may reach herd immunity ahead of other regions in the United States. And if that's the case, what will that mean for us? Will we be able to be a little bit more back to normal sooner than other regions in the country? Someone's asked me, when everyone gets a vaccine, everyone is monitored for 15 to 30 minutes. It's not just people who have a lot of allergies, or possibly have had a reaction to a vaccine in the past. I guess I would just like clarification on that. And probably my most pressing concern is, I'd like to hear what the hospital is doing and other mental health agencies is doing to help our healthcare workers with the amount of stress that they've been under and continue to be under. I'm really concerned about their own mental health. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I can, I'll take the easy one right now, which is the 15 to 30-minute waiting period. And the 15-minute waiting period is for everyone. And it's actually, when you go through the process, it works really well, because you have to schedule your second dose generally, after you get your first one. So you're kind of hanging out, making your appointment anyways, so it does work out. But it is 15 minutes right now. There might be situations that call for 30, and, but those, right now, the general is 15. For folks who have had an experience with allergic reaction or anaphylactic shock, we're really encouraging folks to work with their provider, when that becomes an option to actually be in a medical setting when you get your vaccine. That being said, right now, the rate of anaphylactic shock that they've seen is about 11 in 1 million with an adverse reaction. So it's good to be ready and to be cautious for that, but luckily, we're not seeing severe reactions to it so far. As far as the herd immunity, and the first question regarding the recurring shot, Trey, you're the clinician, so I maybe should default to you, but I think at this point, it is too soon to tell for both of those. And that we need just a little bit more time, a little bit more data to find out. But I might defer to you, Trey.
Yeah, no, you're exactly right, Megan. And one other number to throw on there, on that 11 in a million, which, if you think about it, means, you know, we would never encounter one in this area until we do, right? And so that's why we're ready to go with that. All of the people that came up with that number, that was 20, 21, or 29 people that had anaphylactic reaction, all were at home the following day, and they were treated. Now, they were treated with medication that was required in somewhat of a life-saving type situation, but they all did okay. So it doesn't mean that we don't feel for them, because we do, but if you look at allergic reactions to other things, they're going to be pretty similar in number, whether we're talking about hot dogs or other medications. So it's not that unexpected. And another thing is, is they may have identified, like, what it is in the vaccine. It's something that you all have been exposed to, and you've all done, I mean, it's just a normal inert, inert preservative, but for some reason, a very few number of people are hypersensitive to it, and they probably already had a reaction in the past to it, and just didn't know what it was. And that's kind of what Megan was alluding to there. So let's see, with the herd immunity, one thing that's not talked about enough with herd immunity is the society component and the tolerance component. So we talk about herd immunity like, oh, we can go back to normal once a certain percentage of the population is vaccinated, which means it's incredibly unlikely to get COVID. And that's correct, but way before we get to that point, people will not be able to continue to tolerate all the restrictions that are in place now. And they will, and I feel pretty confident on this, because we already see it, so they will start reducing their adherence to the mitigation. Their tolerance for continued death and continued disease will decrease or increase, I guess it depends on how you're saying it. So it is likely that travel and return-to-normal-type activities, Jean, for a large percentage of the population, will begin before we get to herd immunity, because they, almost in a way, they become numb to the increased hospitalizations and increased deaths. So we anticipate hospitalizations due to COVID-19 to persist for long periods of time at high levels, not at the levels they're at now. So to give you an answer to that, it is possible that certain regions achieve it before others, but it's, what's hard to predict is how will society respond in this situation? The ideal thing is, we get the 75 to 85% herd immunity, and then basically, that means that the virus prevalence just drops to really low numbers, and regardless if you're vaccinated or not, you're unlikely to encounter it. But there's going to be this long period that's sort of in between there. And that's actually, it's not so negative. If we can get a good group of people vaccinated, you know, by the summer, early fall, even if it's not 75%, it is tremendously helpful, and will allow, you know, to remove some of these negative effects of kids not being in school and people not getting to socialize. And you are right that, I mean, our vaccine, it's funny, because Vermont has sort of a lower vaccination rate for a lot of children-type vaccines, and yet, we're seeing higher uptake among Poles, and also what we're seeing with healthcare. I have friends in certain places in the country, Texas and in Georgia, where they're seeing 25% uptake by healthcare workers, and hopefully, that won't last. Hopefully, they're just... Hopefully they're just, you know, trying to be on the fence there.
Good string of questions there, Jean. Stuart, you have your hand up. What's on your mind tonight?
This is probably for Megan. The underlying conditions, is there any timeline and when that, that kind of information might become available to us?
That's a great question and definitely on everyone's mind. The last communication I saw, it was still being worked on. So I'm sorry, I can't give you more information than that right now. And that, that communication was from today, but I bet you tomorrow morning it might be something, so. We'll communicate that out as soon as possible.
On that front, go ahead, Trey.
Let me just say a few things. It is really hard without a long discussion to understand why prioritization, including with these high-risk medical conditions, does have its drawbacks. If we do just age bands and didn't do high-risk medical conditions, within the first two age bands, we're near 75% of the high-risk medical conditions to begin with. And then second, it is so, it slows down operations to try to verify that someone has high-risk medical conditions. It's not just, we don't have staff running around who can say, oh, let's look in the medical record and see. It's really difficult, yet if we just go by age bands, the first age band, the older age band, would only take a couple of weeks. And then the second age band is a little bit more than that. And we get down to the younger age bands, that's where the timeline gets bigger, but our high-risk medical conditions are sort of taken care of. And if you are in a high-risk medical condition and you are younger, you'll just be at the front because you have the greater impotence to get there. So it doesn't mean that I don't see a way to work them in. It just kind of goes against a lot of what all of us felt, especially back in November when we were thinking through this from a prioritization standpoint.
Thank you. That's good. Jean, Jeanne, go ahead, please.
Hi, I just wanted to go back to, I think, something that Jean touched on earlier. Are there, I guess, care, self-care programs in place for medical providers?
Yes, sorry, I apologize that I didn't start in on that, too. I'll speak to here. So we have what's called Incident Command that's been stood up since right before the pandemic, like late February, right before it's declared. And it has been a theme that has kept S V M C strong. That is, our first priority is actually to our staff. Because if our staff isn't healthy, we can't take care of patients. And that goes not only to the P P E and the protective stuff, it goes to the mental stress and the mental capacity. So while, while our goal is to vaccinate, for example, as many people as possible and to test as many people as possible and pull our community out of this pandemic, we can't do that if our staff is overworked, overstressed. So we pay attention to it. We have a group of staff that are dedicated to responding, to provide what type of employee assistance they can. Sometimes there's no magic answer, but we are very open to people taking time away and also making sure that they're not, that they're not so overworked that their focus is on things that don't add value to what we're trying to do and accomplish. And we talk about it almost, I'd say at least three times a day and we have at least three committees that are focused on it. And Megan, you want to say anything more on that?
No, I think, I think that's, I kind of think of UCS, our mental health agency in town. They are absolutely on standby to offering assistance with mental health services, assistive services. So I would encourage folks to look into what they're offering right now. You know, similarly, in us, we find with remote work that people are having a hard time kind of having an end of the day. Folks tend to be available now at nine at night, at three in the morning and Sunday morning. And, you know, trying to really keep some sense of there's work. And then there's also your home life and those kind of blend together. But being able to still find a separation of those two, we find is really a helpful mental health tool lately.
Good reminder. Go ahead, Bruce.
Not so much for the testing, although I think this would be true. My question has to do with whether that, whether either of you can think of ways in which the town can be helpful in maybe publicizing or the organizations within the town, particularly when it comes time for vaccinations, that we can let people know what what phase we're in and who should be signing in. So if there's a way that you can think of either now or later, I would want you not to hesitate. But if you can think of ways, I mean, if it would be helpful for us to find ways to publicize when vaccinations are available for the 75 and older, for the 65 to 70, well, 65 and older, et cetera, let me, let us know, I would say, if you can think of them.
Yeah, Bruce, I'm gonna just kind of piggyback on what Megan started out with a little while ago. And, you know, there will be no problem communicating to the healthy 75-year-old. They're gonna know within hours. It's the disadvantaged folks. It's the folks that have socioeconomic constraints. It's the same reason there's the have-nots and the haves that have developed out of this whole pandemic. So ways we can use all the different organizations, you know, the obvious ones like Meals on Wheels, but others, to make sure that these groups not only understand it's available, but what it means and why they would want to be vaccinated. And I think we all have our place in that and we'll all work together, as you said, but also do some things individually just to reach out. I get that question so much. Where's the list? I want to sign up. When are you gonna tell me? And I'm like, if you've, if you've been able to call and ask that question, I guarantee you, you're gonna know. I'm more worried about other folks.
Me too. That's, that's my concern.
Thank you. Go ahead, please, Sarah.
So two questions here. Sam, I want to get a test. Can you walk me through that process? What do I do right now and how's that work? And also, how effective is the vaccine?
Sure, I'm gonna start real quick. Just the way you do it, the easiest thing to do is on both websites. But I'll just say, if you go to svhealthcare.org, it pops up and says, do you want to get tested or do you want to get vaccinated? It's, we've gotten rid of any advertisement about orthopedic services or any of this stuff that's important, but not right now during a pandemic. And you click it and it gives you these two options that Megan was referring to. They are not necessarily very different and there's no real reason other than it's like, how can we get the resources to test? And we do about, right now, we're doing about 250 tests per day. That's a lot. And it's about 125 at one site and 125 at another. And it's a little table and it just tells you, you call this number or you get on this website and you sign up. You don't need a doctor's order for much of it. You don't need insurance for much of it. If they do ask about insurance, it's important if you do have it to give that information because there is a lot of cost to the state and there's a lot of cost to S V M C. And they can be recouped from the insurance company who have received money from the government to try to pay for these things. So there's nothing wrong with doing that. I tell you, my son did it the other day. He's heading back to school. He's 16. I did it all on his own. He just got on the web. He signed up. It's probably easier for a 16-year-old, I guess, to do that. He went in and got swabbed and then about 36 hours later, he got texted his result of negative.
And if people want to just call in to Sarah's question, if they don't have computer skills, is it call the health department or call the medical center?
You can call our COVID hotline and they will help facilitate that for folks who don't have computers. And that's a good point.
Thank you. Sarah, go ahead.
211 is also available.
And can, before, can we put up that number too? And also, this is at no cost to me if I don't have insurance. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Thanks. And also, how effective is the vaccine?
So the vaccine has an efficacy, and I'm being careful with my terminology that Megan's laughing at, efficacy of 95%, which means a trial demonstrated 95% for both. I mean, one was 94 and one was 95%. Effectiveness is what comes out once the vaccine gets in the public and gets being used, and it's usually very close. It's important to understand this, though. It means that it is highly effective. It doesn't mean that if you see COVID every day, that you won't get the disease. In fact, you will. It takes, that's why herd immunity is so important. If I have a vaccine that's highly effective and I rarely see the virus, I rarely encounter the virus, I'm just not going to get it statistically. There's no way. But if I have a highly effective vaccine and I see it every day, a couple of times a day, by about 50 encounters, I have a higher percentage chance of getting COVID-19 than not getting COVID-19. And it's difficult to explain that to people. That's why having a 65% effective vaccine with 85% of the population vaccinated is actually better than have a 95% effective vaccine with only 40 or 50% of the population.
All right. We need to, I'd like to just acknowledge to Steve Love, who's in our waiting room, that we see you there. And we're getting ready for our audit presentation in a few minutes. This is really important, both to the board and the community, Steve, so we ask you to hang in there for just a couple of minutes longer. Thank you for that. Jean, go ahead. Uh-oh.
There we go. The spacebar didn't work. I just want to make sure that what I'm hearing is accurate, and that is that both doses have to be the same vaccine. Is that true?
There's the recommendations based on experience and then there is the biologic plausibility. So the recommendations based on experience are both doses need to be the same vaccine. Be prepared that these things can change. You see in England, they're changing up some of the protocols. And the problem with doing that is it causes the public to be concerned that information wasn't right. But we know that after one dose, you mount a pretty darn good response and you need to get that second dose in. The numbers of 21 and 28 were arbitrarily chosen to make the trial move quickly and look right. So we're gonna stick with those numbers, but in the future, they, it could be that it doesn't matter near as much when you get your second dose. But for now, we definitely do need to stick with those numbers. And I mean, I did, all our healthcare workers have stuck with the numbers when we got our second dose.
Thanks. Let's not get into the British variant and all that kind of stuff just yet. But I would like to take one more board question and then I think we need to move on. Jim Carroll, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Levine spoke to the Montpelier delegation last week and I asked the, I'm gonna ask it anyway, Donald, about the mutation from Britain.
I am curious.
And he said that it doesn't, it doesn't appear to affect the efficacy of the vaccine. Can you speak to that?
Sure. You want me to start, Megan, and then chime in? So what the variant, the reason that they're even talking about this variant and identified this variant is modeling showed that once it was identified, it tended to spread faster than would be predicted compared to other variants. And the likelihood is that it actually can hold on to one of the receptors of the cells and enter the cell more readily and therefore lower doses or lower exposure to the virus can cause disease. That has nothing to do with the immune response. So the immune response is to a protein that's been identified and your body, once it sees it once from the vaccine, and then when it sees it again in the booster, is ready to go. And when you encounter the virus, there's multiple different ways, not only antibodies, but other ways that your body fights the virus, which is how it fights all viruses. There's nothing unique there. Without the pressure of vaccine being prevalent, it would be just astronomically hard to imagine that a variant developed that is fully resistant to a vaccine. It's possible that it's slightly less, but unlikely.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, hopefully that, if it does, if the British variant does get here, I'm sure that will be reflected in whatever guidance we get from the hospital and the health department. But it sounds like it's gonna remain pretty much the same. Use your mask, social distance, avoid crowds, get tested. All right. Well, listen, I think we should thank our guests. Unless there's any parting words, Trey or Megan, I would like to thank you very much for coming in. Do you have anything you wanted to say before we wrap up with you?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And, you know, we know, Megan and I know the vaccine itself is very safe. I know that that's a question people have. COVID is deadly. COVID's killing now 4,000 people, unbelievable, per day in the United States. And, you know, the vaccine, there's no problems with it. It's highly effective. So there's no reason to use this vaccine to overthink things. Let's get vaccinated and we will be able to pull ourselves out of this and stop all these mitigation measures.
Well said. Thank you very much. Yeah, that's great, Trey. All right. Well, thank you, Trey. Thank you, Megan. We'll stay in close contact and I'll let you, let yourselves out of this meeting. But thanks again for joining us. I'm going to admit Steve and Love, but before I do, board, I, well, actually, I've already admitted him. But let me, I meant to make an adjustment to the agenda. Item six is to set salaries for the manager, the town clerk and the treasurer. We need to have a executive session before we do that. So I'd like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to set, to remove number six and to set a, a number, a new number nine, which would be executive session. And then we will come out of that meeting and vote to set the manager, town clerk and treasurer salary. Could I move a motion? Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Bruce. Any discussion on favor? Please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda has been changed. Stephen Love, you are with us tonight. I see, I see you are in the meeting. I also see you're not unmuted. So if you, if you've called in on the telephone, Mr. Love, please press star six and that will unmute you. I don't have the power to do that. Oh, there he is. Let's see if we can get you unmuted. There, welcome. Thank you for being with us tonight.
My pleasure.
Would you like me to put your presentation up on the screen or how would you like to start this tonight?
Well, that sounds fine to me. This is a little different than I've been used to doing audit presentations, so.
It is a little different, but nevertheless, we're very glad to have you here. And let me just ask board members, can, can everybody see this okay? Is this, give me.
Looks good, Donald.
All right, great. Thank you very much. So Steve, just give me a, just give, just tell me when you want me to change the slides. I think we have reviewed your, we have reviewed your summary. You know, just would draw the board's attention to page four in which the financial statements of Bennington are in material specs in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States and that their report on internal controls and compliance noted no material weaknesses in internal control. So those are the two, two big conclusions for me. And I'm sorry if I just stole your thunder, Steve, but, but since we know that, I think it's now good for us to take a look at the numbers and let you, let you highlight what you feel like we need to know.
Sure, if you want to just jump ahead to slide five. So, and this is, the first couple of slides, five and six are basically the government-wide financial statements. And as I explained in the past, these are statements that include all of the governmental activities and all the business-type activities in one column or each in their own column. But they include all of the capital assets and long-term liabilities of the town, which is different from the fund financial statements only for the governmental funds. So for the proprietary funds, the water, sewer, parking, they report on an accrual basis even in the fund statements. So you'll see that in the two, these two slides and in the financial statements, pages 11 and 12, the proprietary fund column looks pretty much like the total column from the fund statements for the enterprise funds. So what the takeaway from here is from the governmental fund side of things and actually for the business type as well, that the capital assets make up by far and away the largest portion of the town's assets on a full accrual basis and the funds, we don't show them that way. And also our deferred, let's see, what else we can say here? Internal balances, the, basically on the governmental funds, there's 6.2 million in effect owed to other funds because the general fund maintains the cash. in effect owed to other funds, because the general fund maintains the cash balances basically for all the funds. Accounts receivable at four point six million, and deferred outflows and deferred inflows of resources are related primarily to pensions and some to the OPEB. And those amounts, again, are not reported in the governmental fund statements. But against, all of the governmental funds put together, the general fund, the community development fund being the largest portion of those.
Steve, Jim Carroll has his hand up. Do you mind if we ask you questions along the way?
No, please do.
Wait till the end. Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Thank you. Steve, you know, one of my lasting memories from Montpelier will be the use of jargon for those who are uninitiated. So can you just give a simplified explanation of what you mean by capital assets, et cetera?
Oh, sure. So capital assets are basically your property and equipment. And in the case of the town, that also includes infrastructure, so roads, bridges, that anything that the town owns, not state-owned, obviously. So it's your buildings, your water lines, your sewer plant, your town office building, highway equipment, everything that's typically a property, plant, and equipment on a commercial entity's balance sheet.
Okay, and the rest?
And the rest meaning?
Explication of what each one of those, well, we know what cash is.
Yeah. So other current assets, that's going to be made up of things like prepaid expenses, that kind of thing. Internal balances are the due-to, due-froms. So anything that's, if we have six point two million that is due to other funds, if we combine all the other funds, hopefully, they also have six point two million due from the general fund, or at least the governmental funds, the property taxes. Go ahead.
Thank you.
And the others are pretty well self-explanatory, I guess. Other than deferred outflows of financial resources, which those are primarily related to the pension plans. And Gatsby decided to get fancy and call some things that we might have called deferred revenue, deferred inflows, and things that we used to call maybe a prepaid item as deferred outflows. But in essence, those are what they represent. There is a lot of jargon in the governmental accounting.
Okay.
So if that's good, we can move on to the next slide. And again, this is still the governmental funds, government-wide statements. So in this case, we're now seeing all of the liabilities that normally, some of them appear in the fund statements, like the accrued liabilities, for the most part, do accounts payable do. But the bonds payable that you see in the yellow on the right does not appear in the fund statements, nor do net pension and deferred liabilities of two point eight million there. So again, those are liabilities that aren't recognized in fund statements because they're long-term in nature. So the real difference from the governmental funds, both on the assets and the liability side, is these government-wide statements show the long-term assets and the long-term liabilities. Whereas the fund statements, at least for governmental funds, tries to show things in a short-term outlook, if you will. Things that are primarily due within a year or payable with, or receivable within a year. So again, go ahead.
Well, I'm just going to say, Jeanne has a question, but why don't you finish your, finish your summary, and then we'll let her lob it?
That's really about it. You know, other than that, you can see from the pie chart what makes up the larger portions of each of these components. And I guess it's a, it's a good thing that net position is, is the largest piece, net position being basically the equity.
All right.
Go ahead, Jeanne.
That goes along with my question, and I like pie charts. They're easy to see. Is there a point, should we be paying attention, for instance, to how big the portion of the pie for net pension liability is? Or are there, as we go through this, are there particular things that we should all just keep in the forefront of our heads?
I think that the net pension from pension liabilities are really largely out of the town's control. I mean, you participate in the statewide Beamers program, and, you know, they have actuarial valuations that break up the liability to all the participating entities based on their proportionate share of payroll and contributions. So there truly isn't much you can do about that. The OPEB liabilities are a smaller piece, so OPEB against trying to stay away from jargon. Other post-employment benefits, for some of your unions, you provide healthcare after retirement. And that is something that, you know, you can control through your negotiations with the unions. But that's a liability that they're, you know, the Government Accounting Standards Board is kind of focused on and increased substantially the disclosures of over the last couple of years as those kind of plans become more common among the governments. So now, those are the kind of things that you can watch. Obviously, you know that you're watching your, you know, your debt levels, you know, are you issuing, you know, what are you issuing debt for? And actually, this year, on the governmental side of things, the bonds payable decreased about two hundred and ten thousand. There was about a two point one million increase on the enterprise funds, but that was offset, you know, that was money, bonds being issued for the improvements to the sewer treatment plant. And so those are, as long as those bonds are long-term in nature, are offset by a long-term asset. I think you can be very comfortable. It's more when you're issuing long-term debt to cover short-term needs that you've got problems, so. Does that answer the question, Jeanne?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Donald, if you want to move on to the next slide, and that'll be the, basically the same thing in terms of the enterprise funds. And again, these pretty much match what shows up in the fund financial statements, except that it has water, sewer, and parking all combined. Again, as in the governmental funds on the government-wide side, capital assets at twenty-seven point three million is making up the biggest piece of it, internal balances, and there's that lucky number of six point two million that offsets the one on the governmental side, so that's good, which shows that we're in balance on our inner funds. Accounts receivable make up a fairly good portion of the business-type activities assets. And again, the deferred outflows, that's coming out of the pension plans there. And other assets are too small to even see in the pie chart, so. That's basically it on the proprietary fund assets. If you want to flip a slide, if there's no questions, Donald, liabilities. Similarly to the governmental side, it's pretty evenly split between bonds and leases payable and our unrestricted, well, net investment and capital assets making up a big piece of our equity. That makes sense, because there, we show, you know, you can't, I guess the thing to remember is you can't spend that part of your equity. It's invested in assets, but your unrestricted net position is at seven point three million. And again, your net pension liability showing up as the least visible piece at four hundred and five thousand is allocated to the enterprise funds. And again, that's all the same part of the Beamers pension liability, but it's allocated among the funds based on their proportion of the payroll resulting in that liability. And again, the bonds and lease payables, as I mentioned, that went up about two point one million this year. That's net increase, but again, that's all related to the sewer, sewer expansion and RBC replacements. Hearing none? Move on. So now we're jumping back to the governmental funds. And on this slide, actually, if I looked at my notes, it might help me too. So this corresponds to page twelve of the financials. But this really says, what are the costs of providing the services that the town provides? So the highway and police are clearly the largest piece of that, with the highway being the largest piece at four point five million, police at one, four point two, if you will, and general government at four point one six six. And then the other pieces, smaller parts. So these are the costs of providing services. Some of them are offset by grants, and some are, and then the rest is by overall general revenues. If we're good with that one, you can flip to the next slide, Donald. And so this is where, how do we pay for those services? Obviously, the big blue chunk of property taxes at eleven point six six five million is how we pay for most of what we provide for the citizens. Operating grants are a pretty good piece of it as well, at a one point three million this year, at least. And our capital grants came in at about eight hundred and fifty thousand this year. So those pieces, the operating grants and capital grants typically are assigned to each of the, or what the related activity is. So, you know, police might have a good piece of the operating grants, as would the highway. Capital grants, probably a lot of that is highway-related as well. And charges for services, we do charge for a number of services even in the governmental funds. It's not a, that's a pretty good piece of it. And then general grants, that number there, four hundred and eighty thousand in round numbers, those are grants that aren't specific to a given function of the town, so just general grants that the town gets. And that pie adds up to all of the revenue that pays for, or at least tries to pay for the services we provide.
Can I just ask a quick question on that?
Go ahead, Jeanne.
Can you just give us an example of a charge for services, like a filing fee or a building permit, that sort of thing?
Yeah, exactly.
Steve, do any of, are any of these categories affected by COVID relief this year? Are any of these impacted by COVID-related grants that are things we would not see in future years?
I don't think significantly. I would guess they'd be in the general grants column there. Stu, unless you have any better idea than me without digging deeper, but.
In this particular fiscal year, I don't think we have received any funds. Those funds have come to us just recently, so we're into the next fiscal year with the receipt of those funds. So I don't, I don't think there's anything here. At the present time.
And presumably, they would be in, you know, when they do show up the next year, where they'd probably be in the general grants section of this pie chart, since they're not related to a specific service, or a specific function of the town.
Thank you.
Okay, if you want to move forward then? So that's.
I like this graph. It looks like our town logo, sort of.
So that, I mean, you know, that's kind of self-explanatory. When it comes to cost of services on the business-type activities, we're pretty well evenly split between water and sewer, and we still maintain that little parking fund. But that's a pretty even pie. And again, those numbers are basically the same as in the fund statements for those funds, only these are the combined totals. And if we flip over, how do we pay for them? Again, charges for services are the, and by definition, enterprise funds should be funded by charges for the services. And in this case, the water fund at three point, you know, I mean, get my side, my pictures are covered at three point four million. And for sewer's fund, the two point two million. And then a little bit for the, well, you can't really even see the color of the services for parking, but it's seventy-two hundred and investment earnings from those funds at about thirty-eight thousand. And those are kind of big picture, and, you know, you'll see that more detail of some of those in the fund statements. But that's kind of the big picture of where the revenues came to pay for our proprietary fund activities. All right. And so now we're doing the jump over to the fund financial statements. So conspicuously absent from this chart are any capital-related assets. You don't see your buildings and equipment here. It's basically everything that's short-term in nature. So you've got your biggest part being, of course, the property taxes receivable and accounts and notes receivable at eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, and other current assets at eighty-seven thousand. And our total cash being the, again, being kind of the accumulation of cash for the town as a whole, is about five point nine million dollars. So on the fund statements, it's pretty well weighted towards cash balances. And, Donald, if you want to flip over, general fund liabilities and fund balance, we've got due to other funds, again, five point, well, call it five million, basically, and deferred influence of financial resources, those are property taxes receivable, or deferred property taxes, I'm sorry. Accounts payable, just under a million, and accrued liabilities at three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And those are all, again, basically current types of liabilities. None of those we would expect to be paid after a year from now. And again, those are just basically the encapsulation from the general fund. And that's the way traditionally, before Gatsby thirty-four came around, which has been around quite a while now, but typically would have only looked at things on a fund financial statement basis. And all of our long-term liabilities were in account groups, and our assets were in account groups, but not reported in the funds. So this is kind of the traditional view. And if there's no questions there. So the general fund balance components, we have restricted fund balance of just under two million. And we have committed and assigned, those are different categories based on whether a restriction is placed by voters or external, sources external to the town, and committed and assigned are basically categories where the select board kind of controls that, setting aside of amounts. And we do still have, at this point, an unreserved deficit of five hundred and fourteen thousand. But that, I believe, is going down a little bit each year. And again, as long as our overall fund balance is positive, this really shouldn't be anything too big of a concern. Any questions?
Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you. With respect to the unassigned fund balance deficit, what accounts for that?
That basically just accounts for you're having more restrictions on amounts received than not restricted, I guess, is the way to put it. So you still have overall positive fund balance. If you take all of your assets less your liabilities, the total of that is your fund balance. To the extent some of that's reserved or committed or assigned, then it leaves more than the total, then you've got an unreserved deficit.
But that number's creeping down over the years, right?
Yes.
And how is, how does that occur while it's being reduced? What accounts for the reduction?
It really just depend, a function of spending money. So if you spend some of the restricted balance, you know, so let's say we have five hundred thousand restricted for a given purpose, and next year, we spend all of that. Now, our restricted fund balance, that would have gone through the current year's increase or decrease in fund balance, and that restricted piece will become smaller. So really, it's just spending down, or spending what's been restricted in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, I did have something pointed out to me this morning, or maybe it was early afternoon from a phone call from Stu, which apparently originated with Mr. Campbell. And please don't leave there's a reservation for the town clock restoration. That was a derivation of an abbreviation. It was TWN CLK restoration, which your auditor interpreted without asking to be town clock, when in fact, it's town clerk restoration for restoring records of the town clerk. And that has been changed on the actual financials as well. So don't worry, we don't have money for a town. I think the village of North Bennington may have a town clock restoration fund, but anyway, we don't. But this is a breakdown of what makes up all those restricted balances. So, you know, Jim, going back to your question, if we did a reappraisal next year, and it cost seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, that piece of this restricted net fund balance will go away and presumably get us closer to a positive unreserved fund balance. But anyway, these are basically all the pieces of the fund balance that have been restricted typically by, pretty much they should all be by either the voters or sources external to the town.
Jim, I'm happy to call on you next, as long as you don't make some joke about the town clerk restoration. Cassie wouldn't like that. Go ahead, Jim.
Forget it. You know, what part of Cassie needs to be restored? She looks pretty good.
Stop it now.
That's not appropriate, and I'm not going to respond to that.
I just put him in the waiting room accidentally. I got to get him out. Actually, I actually did.
Which I didn't even understand that whole concept of waiting room, when your email said you'd be in the waiting room. I still thought I'd be able to see the meeting, so that's why I was confused. So that's why I was confused. You might have seen me coming and going. I'm thinking like, this isn't working.
I have to stop this just for a second. Let's see. Sorry about this. Jim, that really was accidental that I did not mean to put you in the waiting room. I'm sorry about that. I didn't.
Yeah, sure.
Did, I didn't mean to uh punish you. Okay, let me get this back to a, the correct screen here.
I'm sorry, I, that was just too easy to, a softball to hit.
Uh, okay, here we go. Go ahead with your question, please, Jim.
No, I'm done. That's all I had to say.
Okay, okay.
A little, always good in a financial statement presentation, I might add.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure everybody can read all of these. You might have to move your little icons around to see uh some of them that this is big on the screen and I'm not sure what it looks like on cat TV quite, but there are, there are columns. There are amounts for each of these different things. In the reserve fund, in the restricted balance fund. Okay.
Moving on. All right. And this one is again, just a general fund piece of revenues. And as one might expect, property taxes is the lion's share. It's really pretty consistent with what showed up on the government wide financial statements because the revenue side of things is less impacted than the balance sheet side of things, if you will, on the government wide statement. So again, property taxes clearly are how we fund most of the activities in the town. Uh, intergovernmental revenues are a pretty good component and that varies a fair bit depending on what we've got going on. So that being state grants and whatnot. Uh, so depending on what's going on in the town, that number may fluctuate more so than the property taxes, which tends to be fairly consistent. Uh, fees and charges for services at four hundred and forty thousand and then just other sources of revenue in there as well. So those are the big components of how we pay for what we have our expenditures in the general fund. Kind of rehashing a little bit, but. Okay. So just, and I think everyone liked this slide, although it's you know, it's showing a trend for five years, six years, I guess, actually, on both the, on the sources of revenue. And you know, the increase, although it doesn't show in percentages, there's been a steady increase in property taxes, you know, presumably somewhat consistent with inflation, which drives our cost of services as well. Um, intergovernmental revenues, as I mentioned, that does tend to fluctuate a bit more. I keep trying to move my mouse here like that affects what you people are seeing. I do it on the slide, but it doesn't. So sorry about that. But the intergovernmental, that does fluctuate a bit, although it's a much smaller piece of the pie. And uh, then the other revenue sources again fluctuate a fair bit, but uh, and then fees and charges for and investment interest, they tend to stay fairly consistent over the years. And probably next year we'll drop Hurricane Irene grants and assistance off the slide, but that was there back in two thousand fifteen and was at least as big as some of the other pieces back for that year.
Good revenue trends?
All right, so there's no questions there. So then we go back to the general fund expenditures. Again, as we mentioned before, the highways and roads and public uh safety tend to make up, and public safety inclusive of both police and fire services. Uh, make up the lion's share of what our government costs. And that, and general government services at two point nine million is clearly a good piece as well. Uh, we have a pretty healthy recreation department at seven hundred thousand and just all other sort uh types of expenditures combining at one point eight million. But again, the uh, three big ones are of course the highways, public, public safety and general government. And I think the next slide will also, that next slide is kind of interesting. If there's no questions on this one, the next one will be trends on our.
This one's a good one for us just to keep in mind in terms of how we think about things, but um anyway, we'll keep going to here.
So and I, and this is kind of interesting in that it shows you that some departments or services tend to have more fluctuation than others. Uh, the general government has kind of moved along incrementally along with the property taxes. Public safety, you see a little more variation there. Particularly in the last couple of years, that's jumped up a bit more. Uh, recreation, again, tends to fluctuate and has actually gone down a bit for the last three years. Uh, public works is kind of, again, a far, smaller piece of it, but you can see how the trends go there. And the, the recreation does have some variation and I couldn't really tell you what drove two thousand seventeen and fifteen without digging back uh to be different. Highways and roads clearly has some spikes there and similarly, I don't quite recall at this point what drove the big spike in two thousand eighteen. But I'm getting old and that's two years ago, so. And Hurricane Irene, no, you can't even see it on this slide, but uh, and then the others, which is kind of hidden behind my views of people on the right here, but uh, the other, other sources of, or other expenditure types tend to vary a bit too, with two hun, two thousand eighteen also being kind of a spike.
Steve, if I could, um, two thousand eighteen may have been the uh bond for the new public works, uh, new highway facility.
That would make sense, yeah.
And sa- and same in recreation. I think we passed a small bond to repair the uh sidewall, the west wall of the recreation facility where the pool was. That may have had that impact.
Yeah, and I expect recreational be up somewhat next year as whatever this year, the year we're in now, I guess, not this year we're looking at, but. Yeah, any questions on that one or?
I'm gonna go.
Oh, well, now we're down to the boring stuff. So this is just uh, saying a separate letter about our required communications to those charged with governance. That's you folks. And uh, you know, basically just saying that management's responsible for the selection of accounting principles, which are described in the footnote to the financials. Uh, we didn't see any transactions entered into by the town that weren't in accordance with authoritative guidance or consensus. And all significant, as far as we know, and from our audit, all significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements. We do point out that accounting estimates are an integral part of financial statements. And we've evaluated key factors and assumptions used by management in developing estimates and determine what they're, that they're reasonable. And that, those would include allowances for uncollectible accounts, uh depreciation uh of fixed assets, that sort of thing. So this does go on for another couple of pages. Donald, if you wanted that.
Go ahead. Well, it's mostly qual- qualifications here at this point, and I'm not sure if you feel you need to read them. I just think the board.
Not really, no. As long as they're communicated to you.
I think the board has read them. I, I would like to take us back if I could to uh uh, this right here, which feels to me like this is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, board, this is where the rubber really hits the road, you know, that um, this is page four and it's basically the opinion of our auditor that everything is in good shape. And that there are no internal controls or compliances missing at this point. Is that, that right, Steve?
That is fair to say. The uh, you know, the fact is you got, your folks do have, you have enough staff to really have implemented good internal controls. That gets more difficult and, you know, smaller entities, particularly some of the very small towns where you know, you've got one person writing the checks, keeping reconciling the bank statements and preparing the financials. And that gets very difficult to have good internal controls in that case. And you're, you're also lucky to have talented staff, both in, you know, the finance director is Melissa's done a great job and she's you know, she's, when she started here, she had less governmental experience uh than she does now. And she's really picked it up all along for, I don't, can't even tell you how many years she's been there now, but she's done a very good job and you know, Stu's at the helm and things are flowing smoothly, so.
That's great. Well, I'm gonna stop sharing this report at this point. I'm gonna look into the waiting room and see if I see any uh callers. I do not see any callers uh calling in with questions. Uh, any other questions from uh the board or from staff? No? I hope you'll join me in thanking uh Steve for a, a great presentation and for watching carefully over the uh our town and, and assuring us that everything is being spent wisely as we expect, but nevertheless, it's, it's great to have it confirmed and um we, we appreciate your service, Steve.
Well, thank you, and uh, we appreciate the opportunity to be of service to the town.
Excellent.
Thank you, Steve.
Great.
Can I go home?
All right, well, we're, we'll, we'll let you let yourself out of the meeting and um thank you again. Uh, so we will uh move on if it's the will of the board to uh item number five on our agenda. And um, I'm gonna move Steve into the uh waiting room and then he can let himself out from there. So the item five on the agenda is the community, community policing update. And uh, who would like to kick this off? This is, I think we're starting with the policy review, second reading. Uh, so Bruce, shall I turn this to you?
Yeah. I think I can, uh, let's start with investigation and reporting of hate crimes. I'm just gonna highlight what's different in this from what was there in the uh first reading. Um and most of these, uh, I think all of these changes are the result of requests or, or questions from either you folks or from the community. Um, we added online, this is investigation and reporting of hate crimes. We added on line sixteen, I'm gonna use the unmarked copy because it's a little easier to read for everybody. On line sixteen, we added uh all available and necessary resources rather than just necessary because it makes, clarifies that they can't use resources that aren't available. We on line sixty seven of page two, we did delete the examples of sexual orientation. Um, we did not change the uh definition of sex because that's the definition that the AMA uses, that the National Institutes of Health uses and virtually everybody else uses. Doesn't have to, it's, it's different than gender. And yes, it, it is more fluid now than we used to think. And uh, that's also true, but this is still the definition that's being used. The other addition we made was to the footnote at the end where we identified that hate groups are currently, that was an addition, tracked by reputable groups, including, and then we gave the names of those groups. So those are essentially that, those were the changes. Other than that, it's a, the same as the first reading. Um, right now there are no C A, uh, I'm gonna call them CALEA standards. Uh, because we are not sure that I, I believe we are not yet uh a member of that organization and therefore can't use the can't use the standards, although I would hope that we would leave that there as a jog for us to think about. Uh, and for the department to think about becoming a member of CALEA. Questions?
Can I?
Go ahead, Jeannie.
Yeah, Bruce, so this may be implied um on line twenty five. It says the BPD shall develop a standard system for collecting, analyzing, reporting incidents of crime. And then continues on.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that that language makes it clear that that's both internally in the Bennington Police Department and also includes statewide, like the statewide hate crimes database. Um, I'm wondering if, if it would make sense after incidents of crime to say both internally and to the statewide hate crimes database. If you think that's you know, that's covered, then that's fine. I just, I just want to be very clear because it's both perceived and actual.
Yes. Um, you know, I don't have any, I wouldn't have any objection. I think we could easily in, um, if you said it again. Um, I think um both internally and uh to the state Vermont State Database, that, and that would come in at
Uh, incidents of crime, so the beginning of twenty six. So incidents of crime, both internally and.
Oh, I got it right there. Yep. Before crime and that, both. Does everybody understand what Jeannie is getting at? It's, I, I know the three of us will.
Yeah, I wonder if you could do it right after reporting to collecting, analyzing and reporting to the town and state incidents of crime that are.
Oh, yeah, you definitely could. That's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's better.
So reporting to the town and the state of Vermont.
Yep, that would be the, that would be the addition.
Right. Uh, incidents of crime that are in whole or in part directed against blah, 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 that, the rest. I think that, that's a better uh correction, but it means the same thing. And yes, it was implied, but let's make it explicit. Let's not worry about implications. Yep.
Thank you. I just noticed in the last line, twenty seven on the page, there's an extra.
Yeah, I know. I'll, I'll clean that up when, when this goes to the town office. I will send a clean copy. Unless Stuart tells me not to.
Well, please do.
I figured. I have that one marked, Jeannie. I saw it too. I have no idea how it gets in there.
Jim, go ahead.
Jim. Thanks. Hey, Bruce, on uh, that um, on, on the, at the start of uh uh line twenty five, um, and the collection, that's the collection analyzing, reporting uh data, is there an analog with respect to the state that would you know, be able to uh integrate that information?
I think, Jim, here's how I read what we just added. Um, that um, all departments are supposed to, under current regulation, are, are supposed to be reporting incidents that even if they don't think they might, that may be uh hate crime incidents, they are to report that to the state of Vermont. And so I think that will cover your concern. Unless I've misunderstood your concern, and I might have.
No, 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 the, the concern was that uh, you know, we may be faithfully uh recording this data. Um, but you know, as far as relaying it and having it interpreted and collated uh with the state, um um, it, it's important that, you know, there's a real function that, that it gets done accurately rather than just.
Right.
You know.
That's what this, that's what this section of the policy calls for, is for a system that the department will have to collect, analyze and report internally to itself, but and then externally to wherever in the state of Vermont they want that information. And it'll probably be in the uh public safety department.
Okay.
And the Attorney General's Office. And it's right now in the Attorney General's Office, um, division, Civil Rights Division.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The state is working on part of this right now, even as we speak. That's the dilemma. So I know that it goes to the AG's office.
Other, uh, this is the second reading, but other necessary um sort of observations, questions from the board at this point? If not, you know, I, I would recommend that we make a motion and move on this. Uh.
I will move and we adopt.
Depending on how the board would like to go, so it.
Second.
Is there a motion?
Yep, I moved to it, to adopt as corrected and Jim seconded it.
Okay.
And thank you, Bruce, for all the work that you done, did on this and uh the rest of your cohorts. It's important work.
Yep.
Committee.
It's, yeah.
It, it's my intention to.
It's important work and this is an important time and uh uh was, I, I, I just want to thank you all for what you did.
Bruce, do you have their names? Do you want to read who was on that committee?
And that's what I was, I had meant to have that out beforehand and.
I can have it right here.
Do you have it right there? Do you have it right there?
I do.
Would you do you mind reading those?
I'd be happy to. So the four community members on the policy looking at investigation and reporting of hate crimes were Grace Winslow, Jamar Bivens, Cindy Taylor, and Mark Blank.
As well as the standing committee of.
As the standing committee, which Bruce Lee Clark, Dan Monks, Assistant Town Manager, and Officer Dan Farrara from the Bennington Police Department.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? If not, I would ask you to unmute yourselves. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you very much. Bruce, what's the next one here?
The next one is the policy on fair and impartial policing. Excuse me. And there is a correction and omission that is that is in it's in the marked copy, but it's not in the unmarked copy. And I want to make sure everybody knows where that is. It's on line 24. So it's again, it's the second paragraph of under policy. And after the word after the words except as otherwise outlined in this policy, it should you should add or its attached procedures. The and then it would be a period. The reason for this, this becomes important because it has to do with the interplay between federal law enforcement of immigration law and and in general, our our current standing under the current general order that is right now in effect. The Bennington P D are not involved in enforcement of civil immigration law. And that that's there's about three pages of procedure due that I think, as far as I know, every single department in the state and lots of departments outside of Vermont have this essentially the same language. They are not engaged in civil enforcement of federal immigration law, except in very odd, I would call them very rare cases. The the general feeling, both from the federal government and from the state government, is that local departments don't engage themselves in that way. So we are not going to shortchange the the time when the department will do its own regulations, but I fully expect that the regulations will have essentially those same three pages. And that's what I will be looking for when the time comes. The other additions we made were on pay the only other additions we made were on page two. And it was line 59, under the definition of member or employee. And I decided that I would add this at the request of a civilian, just so that everybody would be clear. It's it clarifies it doesn't change the meaning at all. And the words are regardless of their assigned task, we added or we deleted or and that's regardless of their assigned tasks, duties, or rank. So everybody of any rank is a member of of or of the force. So when we when we say for not for the purposes of employment, but when you say for the purposes of this policy, when we're talking about a member, we are talking about everybody at the department. In essence, that's what that's all that says. It's it seemed like a reasonable clarification. So with that addition and correction, I would move its adoption and then we can discuss or you can perfect it if you want.
All right, there's a motion to move its adoption. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah. So I don't know if there's any discussion, Bruce. It does look like the word addiction was was added to personal characteristics, but which I think is a good not a good addition, but I think that might be one one addition that you didn't mention, but I think it's.
Ah, you're right.
And I'm supportive of that. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Acknowledging that that's a personal characteristic that would not.
Right.
Be discriminated against.
I did.
A question, Donald, for Bruce. And I just want to applaud you on the definitions that you included in the policy. Will that be part of it as well?
Yes.
That's great. That's great.
Yep, that's very well done. Any other board comments, questions on this? If not, I think I will call a question here and ask you to please unmute yourselves. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, those are both our current policies wrought by a great group and a good chunk of our community. So thank you.
Jeannie can. Yeah, you can read the names, absolutely.
I will. So the the community members on the fair and impartial policing policy were Father Bob Weisman, Kate Canning, Greg Berta, and Alana Hart, plus the three permanent members. Yes.
Great.
By now go without mentioning, I should say.
Great. Nice work. Nice work, Bruce. Thank you for shepherding.
Can I just put it up? I don't know if Jeannie was going to do this, but since we've we're in the midst of doing or talking about policies, if there are people out there who are working in the town of Jeannie, were you going to do this?
Jeannie is right now. Oh, Jean.
Oh, Jean is. I'll let Jean do it.
Okay, okay. Well, feel free to feel free to add to what I'm about to say, Bruce, if you feel if you want to.
So we have other activities at this point? Okay.
Yeah, I'm just bringing the public and the rest of the board up to speed with where we are with the interview process for the next six policies. The first one being January 27. So as of this moment, we we are 99% sure we have 14 applicants that are willing to participate on the committees going forward. I'm I'm about to send out many more emails to encourage people to to apply. We're going to keep the application open. Hopefully, more people will will decide to apply. But we're pretty happy with where we are from where we were a week or so ago. And I have to say, I think part of the slowness of getting the response from community members was the holidays. It occurred to me like, wow, people were pretty busy over the holidays. So so things things seem to be picking up. We ran the letter to the editor in the newspaper. We've gotten some responses because of that. So we're pretty optimistic and we did four interviews today. They all went extremely well. We have, I'm not even sure how many we'll end up doing on Wednesday of this week. Let's see. If anyone has any questions about the 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 process or anything, our email addresses are available on the town's website. All the meetings are on Zoom. The interview is on Zoom, so safety does not need to be a concern. We're willing to adjust the timing of meetings. I guess what I'm saying is if anyone is interested, don't hesitate to apply. We'll work with you to make it work for your schedule. Let's see, I guess that's all I was really going to say. Did I forget anything, folks? No, I think that's I think that's that's great. Yeah. And I, you know, I do think hopefully we will have either a full complement of of community members or close to. Right.
Good.
Good. And I think, go ahead.
I would just add that the folks who who provide, I think, in at least in the experience that we've had so far, the community members have provided really remarkable contributions to what where we start out in terms of models and and really help push this process along. And so I think that it's really important. The other the other thing I will just add, and I've said this before, but their questions that they bring to the process really helps both in terms of Dan Farrara's ability to communicate back. This is this is why we're thinking about it this way. But if you think about it another way that works, we can do that. So I I'm really appreciative of the community members. So I encourage as well anybody who would like to. I'll be sending out some emails again tomorrow as well. But thank you.
So that's great. And I think the only other thing that we wanted to say, and I think this probably is true of everyone on the board, is that the the discussion at the budget meeting on Saturday was really fantastic. The department's focus on collaboration, the the willingness of United Counseling Services to come to the budget meeting and just the really thinking broadly about how to best offer services to to our community was I was, I think, we we all just applaud that. And it was it was quite wonderful. So thank you to the department for all that work. And with that.
Great. Okay, well, thank you, Community Policing Crew. We will move, we were going to skip, we're going to skip the agenda item number six. At this point, we'll move right to managers' report. Stuart, you've got one action item for us here.
Yes, I do. And it's an it's an annual item here. The board generally authorizes the certificate of highway mileage. If we had added any highway mileage during the year, it would show up on this report. This is the the mileage is used to generate state funds for class one, two, and three highways. And we need a motion to authorize the chair to sign the certificate for us this year. There were no changes this year.
Jean, you have a question on this?
No, something that something else. I just before before Stu's done, I just want to make one comment.
Okay, let's let's finish up with this first. So it's just to be clear with everybody, this is all zeros, right? So there there are no there are no changes. This is a concrete thing. We do this every year.
I would move that we empower the chair to sign for us.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
That will do it.
Okay. Thank you, Jeannie. Any further discussion? If not, I would ask you to please unmute yourselves. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed or abstaining? Okay, that is unanimous. Stuart, my question for you on this is, do I need to send you the original or can I send you a a digital scan of it?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, send me a scan of it. That's fine.
Okay, and all I need to do is sign it. I don't need to put at any of the.
No, the town clerk, town clerk will certify your signature and that's that will be the date it's filed.
Great. So what else, Stuart, is on your manager?
I just have a a brief update on the COVID that that department over the last couple of weeks. I'm happy to say that all of the officers who were able to return to work, return to work this week and are doing well. Somewhat limited in in the time that they have to work because there's still some weakness and some overriding health conditions that that will slow their return. But I'm very happy to announce that the officer that had still been in the hospital was released today and is on his way home. I would also announce that in spite of some Facebook posts that people may have seen out there, I did not have the vid, as it was said on Facebook. So the other part of this is that our police and firefighters, first responders are now being vaccinated. And that's been underway for the last week or so. So we're starting to see some good things here. Truly light, perhaps at the end of a very long tunnel, but nonetheless, it's some light.
Facebook lies are are pernicious and amazingly destructive. I have a coworker coworker from Greenfield, Mass., who told me she was sorry to hear about our town manager getting COVID.
Well, I didn't.
Don't worry, I said, he's fine. It's all it's all more of that Facebook stuff. All right, so got a couple of hands up. Jean, go ahead, and then we'll go to Jim.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out to anyone who's listening, who may be interested, that there's an Appalachian Trail Community Meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock in the Shannon Promise to share the Zoom link on the town Facebook page. I'm going to zoom in. I think it might be cool. So we've gotten designation to be part of the Appalachian Trail. So anyone who's interested, zoom in.
Oh, that's great. That I appreciate you mentioning that. I apologize, I thought it was a question for Stuart you had. Stuart, did you have anything else that you wanted to say about that?
No, I'm I'm fine. It was a relatively short report. You there is a substantial update that I attached that came out from the state of Vermont on the P F O A and the P F A S community update. But that's that's good reading. I'll try to go through it.
Okay. Okay, great, Jean. Thanks for the reminder about that. About the Appalachian Trail Group. I I hope that continues to be strongly strongly supported and attended. Jim, go ahead.
Thank you. Stu, I wonder if you say, I'm sorry, I can't find the email. I tried to find it before the meeting started from the Secretary of State regarding town meeting day and the changes that that he's recommended. Have you seen that?
I have not. I have been in touch with Will Sel-Sennin in in the Secretary of State's office. Because we from a point of view of our own, the way we handle town meeting, our floor meeting will will be by Zoom. Donald and is working at TV and other organizations in the community to a platform that will work for all of us. Are because we vote by Australian ballot, there aren't any real changes to the way we will vote on the items that are on the municipal warning. And I think the Board of Civil Authority was meeting tonight here to determine a a voting location in North Bennington so that the North Bennington residents can vote there because their school votes will will also be there as well.
You're getting a lot of you're getting a lot of nose, no head shaking.
We voted to keep it at the fire, to have only one polling place at the fire department.
So, Stu, will it be will it be in person voting or will be ballots sent directly?
We're not changing the way we handle ballots. Absentee ballots are available by contacting the clerk's office. It will be in person voting at the present time. We have a setup that we think provides sufficient safety for those who who want to vote in person. If you do wish to vote by absentee, you may contact the town clerk's office and secure a ballot that way. But we determined mailing out 9,500 ballots at our expense not not be cost effective.
Well, the problem is when people showed up without their ballots too, right? So there there are other other logistical problems with it, weren't there?
Well, there are a number of ballots that people will have access to.
Yeah. But anybody who wants a ballot for any reason can talk to the town clerk and it will be sent to them.
That's correct. Correct.
Okay, my last question. My last question, Donald.
Go ahead.
It's for you and for Stu. And it goes back to cannabis and getting it on the ballot and whether we can get this as an agenda item so that it can be on the March ballot.
We we at your request, we can put it on the agenda item at the next meeting.
Great.
But but Stuart, what's the what's the timeline on ballot printing?
You could you could. Well, that's that's not a problem. At our next meeting, January 25, we will have the warning prepared for you. Take a look at the the statute and see what the wording has to be on the cannabis. And I have prepared two adding that article on a second, a second warning. So if you do decide to add it, the warning, we won't have to delay signing that warning because we do need to have the warning posted by February 2. We meet on the 25th. We should have no problem getting it into the banner by the 30th, which gives us the 30 days, more than a 30 day notice for the municipal warning. And we actually, we actually double up on our protection. The statute says you must warn it 30 days in advance. The statute says you must warn it 30 days in advance of the vote, or it must be contained in your annual report. So the warning is in the annual report. It's also 30 days. So that will, we'll take care of that. We'll have that language on another. So there'll be two copies that you'll be looking at, and you can decide whether or not you want people to vote on it this year or wait another year.
Do we, do we need to do the same thing with pennies for parks?
I already have drafted language that's in the warning that will be pennies for parks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see, hands. Jean, go ahead.
Can someone just clarify if early voting is not going to be an option because of COVID? You used to be able to walk into the town office earlier, you know, before Election Day and vote. I'm assuming that's not an option.
I would say you'd have to do that if, in fact, the clerk's office will allow it. You would have to do that by appointment. We do allow people to come in to the office and work in the land records and those kinds of things, but we go through a process where we do temperature taking and those kinds of things. So I don't know what, I haven't talked with Cassie about whether or not she's going to even consider that at the present time.
Great. Why don't you give us an update on that when you can?
Okay.
This will certainly be well before, well before voting is ready to start. Okay. So anything else from Stuart? That's it for you. Upcoming agenda, 25th, looks like we may have a conversation about cannabis. We may have a conversation about the parks, trying to figure out the will of park structure. We may have a conversation about setting the ballot. What else is on our agenda for?
Well, you would have to, given that you're going to be making a final decision on budget implications tonight, those will be incorporated into the budget. So you'd have a two-step process. One is to adopt the budget and then adopt the warning. So there'll be two action items there for you for January 25th. I don't think I have any other major things pending, but I may be wrong. I'm sorry, I didn't prepare myself very well for that question.
I don't have anything else for that night. I just want to, the Energy Committee would like to come and make their recommendations on February 8th, if that's possible. And if not, then the ruling after that, but just so it's in our heads.
And Stuart, I don't remember this either, but when are the mandatory hearings on the mayoral?
February 1st and February 7th.
Okay, all right.
February 8th, I guess it is. First is a Monday, and then it's Monday, the 8th. The regular meeting for us, and so there'll be a public hearing portion of that meeting. February 1st will be entirely dedicated to the mayoral question. We'll have to get out an agenda with all the call-in numbers, Donald, before that time.
Okay. All right. So, board, we need to go into an executive session. We will be talking about salaries and personnel matters. Then we will come out of that executive session, and we will take a vote at that point. So I'm going to ask, I think we're going to ask, we're going to thank Nancy Lively and tell her a good evening. I think, oh, excuse me a second, there's a call, we're going to admit this caller, even though it's late in the evening, we're going to say, caller ending in 840, go ahead and unmute yourself, press star six, please, and tell us what's on your mind. Caller ending in 840, please press star six to unmute yourself and tell us what's on your mind. Okay, I'm going to take it as an accident.
Donald, you didn't do other business.
I didn't do other business. Sorry about that. All right, let's do other business. Kind of quickly if we can. Any other business from the board? Go ahead, Jean.
Yeah, I just, I don't know how anyone else feels, but I'm just going to raise the issue. Does anyone feel like we should send some sort of a statement to the town of Stamford in response to them providing us with their petition? I just don't want them to interpret silence as acceptance for what they did. I just don't know how others are feeling. I can go either way. I just didn't know if we felt it was appropriate to send them some sort of statement announcing what they did.
It's up to you. I would use it for kindling. Go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, since we're not meeting again, and Jean, I'm going to, I'll probably send him a personal note, just as me as a person, not as a board member. But we're not meeting again until after Martin Luther King Day, and I wanted everybody to know that the Interfaith Council and the Peace and Justice Center are inviting us to do a couple of things. One is get out on your front porch at 6:00 PM on the 18th, and with a candle or with a flashlight if it's too windy, and a bell or a pot, and ring the bell at 6:00 with the light. Also, at 7:00, there's a, you can watch a movie, a 30-minute movie from the NEA about, which is called I Am From Here, and then there's a discussion. And then after that, there is also an opportunity to learn more about racism in ourselves and our community, and there's information about this, and you can go to the Greater Bennington Peace and Justice Center.org and get all the links that you need to celebrate Martin Luther King Day, and I hope we all do. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. Other board comments? Jumping around a little bit here, but I'm happy to take them if there are any.
Just one briefly, and I've got to mention it in honor of my mother. Her birthday is the 18th, so Bruce, when you're banging your pots and pans, think about Junie Moon.
Absolutely.
Nice. All right, well, now we have to go into executive session. So I guess at this point, I would say thank you to Nancy Lively, thank you to Dan Monk, thank you to Stu Hurd, and Cat TV, if you don't mind, I'll put you in the waiting room. And we will, I guess I need a motion to go into executive session, please.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Personnel.
Okay, for personnel, we will be making a decision on the way out. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we are going into executive session. Stuart, thank you for your participation tonight. I'll get back to you later on this evening after we wrap up this with.
Very good. Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Great, thanks. Cat TV, I'm putting you in the waiting room, and we'll bring you back, we'll bring you back into public session when we come out of executive session. All right, so I'd like a motion to come back into session, please.
Tell me.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are back in session here. We have Cat TV rolling. Do I have a motion on the job of setting the town manager, the town clerk, and the town treasurer's salaries, please?
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry, I had to mute Cat TV.
Okay, yes. I'd like to make a motion. We just had a lot of long discussion about the hard work that the town, how hard the town has worked this year to keep us safe, everything from making sure that we had appropriate COVID protocols in place and following them, to having a really amazingly difficult election run incredibly smoothly with no hitches at all that we could see. So I'd like to make a motion that we set the salaries next year, first for the manager at $115,105, for the town clerk at $90,002, and for the treasurer at $15,304.
Okay, motions on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any further board discussion? Okay, if not, I'm going to call the vote. Please unmute yourselves. All in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that is passed unanimously at this point. It is eight.
I actually, sorry, I was thinking, and I oppose.
Okay, so we have to do a roll call vote. Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jeanie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sarah, how do you vote?
Nay.
And I vote affirmatively, so the motion is carried. And we have concluded our business. It's 8:41, and I would look for a motion, well, before we do, we should just put it out there that we are grateful to all of our town staff for everything they've done this. Whether or not, whether or not we vote for this does not indicate whether or not we're appreciative of this because everybody on this board, and I know I speak for everybody, is grateful for the good work that this town does, and we are unanimous in that sentiment. So I would look for a motion to come out of session, and we're meeting.
To adjourn.
Thank you. Sarah, seconding. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned for the night. Thank you very much. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Cat TV.